Two, one.
Good evening, everybody. It is January 24th, 2024. This is the Ashland School Committee meeting, and later in the evening it will be a joint meeting with the Ashland School Committee and the Ashland Select Board. Starting off, I will read our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social-emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV. Our order of business this evening includes an opportunity for the public to be heard, a presentation on communication by a Warren Site Council representative, Caitlin, warrant approvals, consent actions, minutes, gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, dates, action items, and then we will enter into a joint meeting with the Ashland Select Board to have interviews for a joint appointment by the school committee and select board to fill vacant school committee seat. We're interviewing interested candidates. Not everybody on this list is appearing tonight. We have had some drop out, but we will be interviewing...
That's data wise.
Oh, excellent. Kathleen Bratica, Marcy Culverwell, Jennifer Gordon, and Jonathan Isaacs. Then there will be a discussion and vote to appoint the candidate, and then we will move, I will move to enter executive session under Section 21A3 to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Not to return to open session, and this is regarding the Ashland Educators Association, teachers, education support personnel, nurses, administrative assistants, and custodian and maintenance. Then we will adjourn. Not to return into open session. So I will take attendance and ask if you guys are okay with the order of business this evening. Tina Fatanides?
Yes.
Paul Kendall?
Yes.
And Mark Terry is unable to join us this evening. Then next, I will ask if there's any member of the public that wants to make public comment this evening. Seeing none, I will move on to our first item on the agenda, and that is our wonderful presentation on communication. I just want to give some background. I do, I am the liaison for the school committee on the Warren Site Council, and I've also been on the school committee for, I don't know, 12 or 13 years now, and we have had communication as a goal the entire time, and we've often really just tried to rack our brains about how to best get, reach people, get our message out to the public, make people feel welcome, all those things. And we've tried a number of different things. We've hired people to help us. We've had really robust debates and conversation about it. And when I listened to Caitlin's presentation at the Warren Council, Site Council, I was just really moved by, it was just, we're racking our brains about how to get things out, but we hadn't really heard about how it's received on the other end. I mean, we've certainly made attempts, but this was a really great thorough presentation, and after I heard it, I thought it would be great to share with the entire community and the school committee.
Do you think we should maybe do introductions here? So when she's presenting, we are asking questions?
Sure, absolutely. So you know me, Caitlin. I'm Lori.
Mm-hmm.
Paul Kendall, I'm a member.
Tina Fatanides, I'm a member as well.
And you know Jim in line.
And we also have online Kristi Arnold, and our communications director.
Yep, and we hired Esmer to help us with communications, and I just really loved your perspective, so thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you, Lori, for the introduction, and thank you to all of you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you could see on the very first slide, I'm going to be speaking in particular about outreach to multicultural families. That's my frame of reference. So for today, I think it's first important to begin a little bit more with a bit about my own background, how my own experience informs my perspective, as I'll be asking each of you to do the same. Then I'd like to move from there into a more concrete framework for the conversation moving forward. I'll ask you to complete an activity that will hopefully elicit your feedback, and as I said, lead into further discussion and collaboration on this topic. And then I'll move into some more concrete, actionable steps. Again, I'm still looking for feedback, though, with those pieces as an element of collaboration. And finally, if there's an opportunity for feedback and questions, I certainly welcome those. So as Lori mentioned, and as she introduced me, I am a parent representative on the Warren Site Council, so that's one piece of who I am, most visibly perhaps as a parent in the Ashland community. But I think there are multiple aspects of my own identity that inform my perspective for this outreach in particular. The first, as I said, is as a parent. The second would be, as a teacher, I have a background in education with over 10 years of classroom experience. And then finally, my own perspective as both a student and an educator, living outside of the United States. So as you can see on this very first slide, I am a dual citizen. I'm both Canadian and American. I grew up in Connecticut, but my first experience living outside of the US did not come until I was studying abroad in France. There, it was probably my first experience where I was placed in a situation where the education system wasn't what I was used to. So as a concrete example of that, and I think this helps to inform my perspective for this piece of outreach, I was a straight-A student in college up until that point. However, when I arrived in France, I earned some of my first fees, not necessarily because of a language barrier, not necessarily because I didn't know the content, however, because it was challenging for me to know how to navigate that system, and to know how to best prepare, to know what those expectations were. Between, then from there, I spent a year, another year-plus abroad.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just a couple closer to that mic.
Sorry. I spent another year-plus abroad on, between my undergrad and graduate work here, teaching English language classes as well as American culture classes. And there, as an educator, I think it was the first time, again, I had this set framework for courses. However, some of those pieces of the coursework weren't necessarily ones that I identified closely with for American culture. So it felt like there were certain expectations that I was being asked to perform when I didn't identify strongly with. There in Belgium, I met my husband Marco, who you can see in the photo. Marco is also a dual citizen of both Mexico and the United States. And here in Ashland, we're raising our two boys, Oliver and Remy. Oliver is a kindergartner at Warren School, and Remy is three years old in preschool. And that's probably the biggest why for me behind it, is my kids who are multicultural, they're also bilingual. We speak both English and Spanish at home. And so in this area of outreach, I really think about them, but I also think about the entire Ashland community and how to make that outreach both inclusive and equitable for everyone. Thank you. And so I have a quote, I think, just in general to frame this outreach. I think it provides a strong framework for the overall presentation, and it says, quote, "To be culturally effective doesn't mean you are an authority in the values and beliefs of every culture. What it means is that you hold a deep respect for cultural differences, and are eager to learn and willing to accept that there are many ways of viewing the world." And I think this quote in particular, sorry, is important, because we all can't be an authority on every single culture, but it's important in my mind to hold that respect and openness for those other cultures, and to be willing to learn from them. Next slide, please. And so in that framework, when we think about a cultural identity, I think it's also pertinent to note that this topic is really, really complex. So you'll see on the graphic there that culture, cultural identity can encompass many different aspects, ranging from attitudes to language to food to rituals, behaviors. Each individual or family or whatever it may be entity may place more importance on one aspect than another, and that varies from generation to generation. It varies across culture, and as I said, it varies from family to family. So for example, the attachment to what a certain, what certain aspects of culture means are different. There are commonalities within each of these groups. For example, one group may share a language. They may share a nationality. But again, a certain individual may place more importance on one versus the other. With his permission, I'll use my husband as an example. He grew up in Mexico and is a naturalized American citizen. And if you were to ask him what is most important, he would put food as the most important piece, especially to pass down to our own kids. And in fact, in our family, the language piece, the Spanish-speaking piece is, comes more heavily from me than it does from him. And then finally, the last point I want to make about this complex piece of identity is that in addition to there being different groups, there may be families or individuals who identify across the and of cultures. Again, I'll use my own family as an example. My children both are Mexican and American, and so again, what, how they view each of these pieces of their own identity or cultural identity may be different. Next slide, please. And so the next question becomes, how do we take all of this and apply it to Ashland Public Schools? The figures that you're seeing, the statistics on this slide are coming directly from the Ashland Public Schools website, and I chose to highlight three statistics in particular. And you'll note that for each of these statistics, they've at least doubled over the course of 10 years, which is a drastic shift. So the three that I'm looking at in particular are English language learners, students of color, and students for whom English is not their first language. And so while those changes have occurred, I think it's important to note then the framework and how we best serve those populations potentially also needs to change. Next slide, please. And so as I mentioned before, I really am looking for collaboration and feedback. So what I have on this slide is an activity that I'm going to ask each of you to complete. I have note cards if you need them to jot down your ideas. Here is a scenario that I'd like you to imagine. I want to point out that it won't be the same scenario for every family, but it is an example of what could potentially be. So imagine that you are going to move permanently to another country with your family. What would help you to feel welcomes? How would you feel comfortable in the school community? How would you learn to navigate a new system? What if you didn't speak fluently the language of your new community? What would be helpful? Who would you turn to for answers? And I'll give you a few minutes to reflect and jot down a few ideas. So before I move on, I'd like to just briefly ask if anyone feels comfortable sharing one or two ideas that they written?
Anybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think, from my perspective, I moved to another country and didn't speak the language, or just felt uncomfortable. But comida, obviously, right? The food. But no, I think what would make me feel comfortable, just the initial outreach to someone within the community. So I think, I think of moving into a neighborhood or into an apartment complex, hopefully someone within that complex will reach out, right? That would help make me feel comfortable initially. You know, in the school community, it's when you register for school, what are we doing? Are we creating packets? Are we creating flyers, information as to where things are within the community, not just the school, but where local restaurants, the local religious organizations, things of that nature. Again, depending upon the culture where folks are coming from, the communities, whether it's for us, it's our strong, heavy Brazilian Portuguese population, and, you know, are there areas locally that would help them fit in? How would I learn to navigate a new system? Sort of what we're trying to do, and I would hope there would be within the system, an outreach group that we could connect with, that would move me along. If you didn't speak fluently the language, what would be helpful? Honestly, learning the language, but trying to assimilate and find folks who have struggled as well, moving into a new culture, and the things that they did. And who would you turn to for answers? Again, it depends on who you are as an individual, but it might be your local, again, religious organization, might be the church, it might be someone who is in the school system that, you know, is, has been through the scenario presented.
Yeah, I mean, mine are similar to Jim's. So for the, for first one, what makes you feel welcome? A sense of community that welcomes new people and perspectives. You know, I think that's the, you know, if you found a place that, you know, when somebody moves in, somebody says hello and tries to make you feel welcome. What would make you feel comfortable in the schools? I mean, we talk a lot about connectedness and ensuring that everyone has a trusted adult in the school, and I think that initial contact, knowing that the faculty and staff care for the child and the family and are going to provide support. So I think that initial contact, it's like, if you were to go to register, and it felt like just a process, and that process didn't really matter whether you were, you know, coming from Framingham, or coming from Brazil, or Mexico, or Canada, right? I think that would be a negative. And so at that initial contact, getting that sense that it matters who you are and that they're going to provide you supports. How would you navigate a system? I have no idea. I guess I would try to learn as much about...
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, if you go there, it's going to be very different depending on where you are, and I think so, trying to learn as much about that, you know, that community and many of the other things that Jim said about, it's all about those connectedness. And so if you find someone who is bilingual, if your language is the barrier, that's welcoming and can help you, and that, you know, it's those same people that you would turn to for assistance, and whether that's in the school system, a support group that the school system puts you in touch with, a religious organization or whatever, you know, goes back to community, right?
Right. And to piggyback on that, because I kind of had a lot of the same themes, but in terms of, you know, how would you feel comfortable in the school community? How would you learn to navigate a new system? The thing that came to mind for me is, well, was somebody helping me figure it out, right? And so it's not just that, you know, when you first come in, here are the rules, here's the paperwork to fill out, but, you know, what is, what is a half a day? What does that mean? What is, you know, all of these different things, that would be a total nuance, and you kind of threw out, and they pop up at random intervals. There's no one handbook we could put together that describes every scenario that parents and kids are going to encounter. So the continuing welcome of the community to also realize that not everyone will understand the purpose, the why, the what of it all, and so to continually making sure that, that it's, that it's explained, and so that everybody understands, you know, what's going on and why it's happening. And I think that just helps build a sense of community, so nobody feels that they're on the outside and just kind of following along.
Thank you all for sharing. I think a lot of the points that each of you touched on, you'll see, are going to be reflected in the next slide, if you don't mind. So the three key points I want to touch on that I think are important aspects of outreach are empathy, awareness of one's own identity in outreach, and trust. I think in particular, most of you touched on the first and the third, those ideas of empathy and trust. I'll break them down a little bit more thoroughly. So I have a quote that I really like in relation to empathy. So empathy is not simply a matter of trying to imagine what others are going through, but having the will to muster enough courage to do something about it. So I think it's one, one piece to try and put yourself in someone else's shoes, but it's the next step that follows, or what that next step is to promote change, to make people feel more welcome in the community. That, that's the important piece beyond just that initial piece of imagining. A number of you touched on this other piece, that no two situations are alike, right? So to, how can we better understand each of these individual perspectives to better serve those, these, each individual and individual family. In addition, I think this piece of empathy, might, there might not be a group within, with whom an individual or a family can relate. And so if that perspective is not necessarily represented, will it still be respected, welcomed, and understood? I think that's an important piece. The second point is awareness of one's own identity in outreach. I think it's important to examine one's own perspective. I did at the very beginning, I told you a little bit about my own perspective and how that informs, my experience informs my perspective, guaranteed within my own perspective. There are blind spots, as there will be for everyone. And I think to be aware of the strengths of one's own perspective, but as well as aware of where there may be potential blind spots in that identity. I think the next piece that I gave a previous example, but I'll give another one, is to be cognizant of what those expectations are of these communities, and are, are expectations going to yield to authenticity? So for example, when I was teaching and living abroad, there were certain expectations of what an American should be, and what I wish to be capable of talking about. One of those was that I would be really interested in sports, football, and baseball. Sorry, Pats fans, but that's not me. I love the Boston Marathon, but I didn't match necessarily that cultural expectation. So to be aware of those pieces, so that communities are able to authentically represent who they are. And then the final piece all of you touched on is that element of trust. Is there someone in the, within the community that I feel comfortable? Can I trust those people who are in power? Do I see myself in them? If I don't, do I feel heard even if they don't identify the same way as I do? In addition, is there a space for me to meet with others with whom I identify? And in particular, in the school system, is there a person who can serve as that liaison, a person with whom I feel comfortable interacting in that school community? And then finally, I think that trust can be built in this aspect of, do I feel seen and heard? Do I feel seen and heard not only in the administration and the people who are in the school community, but also in how my voice or my perspective is represented in the community, the curriculum in what is seen in the school as well? And that doesn't necessarily just have to be in terms of faculty-staff. So those are the three aspects that I think are important as a framework. On the next slide, you will see, this is a statistic, a graphic showing that parent, the benefits of parent involvement in children's schooling. I think this will resonate with most people. It's coming from the American Psychological Association review. And I think, as you would with any parent, approach it the same way as you would with multicultural families. Assume that most parents and caregivers want to partner with educators and administrators to support students. What does that mean? It might mean that there are barriers, or there might be difficulties why that isn't happening, not necessarily a lack of will to do it, or desires to do it, but why isn't it happening? And so then you'll see on the final slide.
So if I could, before we move on, you bring up that assumption, and I want to, since you know, I'd love to have your opinion on it. As we talk about it, we've, we've mentioned over the years many times about how do we engage, particularly our Portuguese families and things like that, where we're not seeing the level of engagement that we expect. And the question I always ask, and I don't know that any of us sitting here could answer, and not you as an individual couldn't answer it either, but would love your perspective, is sometimes it might be a cultural thing, too, in that where they came from, that's not what they have an expectation of. And so how would you, you know, first of all, is that, you know, have you seen that? And does that resonate for anything you've heard or experienced or talked to people about? And then how do you, how do you blend? Because it, because we've become one community with multiple people that, different people that identify differently culturally, but we have to be essentially one community. We have to blend. And so I think sometimes we may have expectations that that barrier might be a cultural barrier or two, and how do, how do we navigate that? Because maybe we're expecting things that there's, there's not an interest, at least initially, and maybe it's a growth opportunity or something like that.
Sure. So I'll speak from my experience and my own family experience. I'm American, so I'm familiar with the system. My husband, as I said, grew up in Mexico and is not familiar with the system. Without me being that point person to guide him through what those expectations are, he would be very much hands-off. He would not have a very strong idea of what's going on within the system. However, does that mean that that's his desire? No. I think, though, without someone with whom he feels comfortable to explain to him or to help him navigate that system, that distance would still remain. He would assume that he's doing what he should be doing, and being hands-off. But I think that also builds to the previous slide, right? If there's not a person with whom you trust, you feel like you could ask those questions, what are your expectations of me? Or how can I, or even on the opposite end, as you'll see on the next slide, sorry.
No, no.
No, thank you.
That second point, I'll go backwards to the first one after, but I think part of outreach is first that piece of asking, right? Ask those communities, how would you like to be involved? What feels comfortable to you? What do you need? And not just asking, which seems very simple, but then listening and following up on that. I think often, at times... times it's possible to feel limited and this is what we expect for the outreach. Well, maybe that by asking, it can expand what that looks like, something that we might not have thought of, or as a community, you might not have thought of, what does involvement look like? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that there's a real answer to it, but more hearing your perspective of how do we, you know, like you said, your husband might be of, that's his initial mindset going into it. And maybe we have an expectation that is here and he's starting here, but maybe the, the expectation is he'll never be here, but how do we find the right place that works for, for, you know, for his family, right?
Sure.
It seems like that's the challenge, and that's why I'm so glad you're here, is that I think that the coming full circle with a conversation, you know, is the piece that's missing. And the challenge, I guess, on our end is what might seem obvious to us on how you open a conversation. Maybe we invite you to a, you know, kids' night out or something, but that's not your jam and you're never going to come. So finding the best way, place, time, you know, to open a conversation that feels safe so that both sides can share that kind of, at that level. You know, I think that's where we're a little stuck. And not because we're bad people, because we're thinking about it, like you said, in terms of what we think is reaching out, might not be received that way.
Right.
And so then we're stuck in a vicious cycle of, we're, we're using all the tools, you know? So it's finding that sweet spot of opening the conversations.
Yes.
And, and we've, we've certainly, over the last year or so, had a lot more success in some of our outreach that we've done. And Esmer is the Director of Communication. And we have Kristi Arnold, who's our Director of English Language Learning. And Kristi's done an amazing job. And we've had events at the schools that have drawn in, you know, forty, fifty people of, of, you know, particularly our Yale students and their, their families that we've never been able to before. And so
That's helping.
That's one of the reasons we, we asked them to be here, because I think, you know, what you're talking about is what we're trying to do. And we're getting some, some traction, but we really appreciate you coming and, and sharing it, because, you know, it takes, takes a lot to, you know, be willing to stand up there and share your perspective. So thank you.
Thank you. So on this, the very final slide, I have this one right here, 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 where you should be.
It's the first time ever.
I talked, I talked a little bit about the ask and listen, one of the more, I guess, concrete actionable steps. And again, the, I'll be brief with each of these. They deserve more fleshing out than what I have time for today. The first would be the cultural competency, which would be an awareness of your own community. And by that, I don't mean just those, those facts and figures. That awareness of the community is really taking the time to get to know who they are, what's important to them, how do they feel comfortable within the, the community. We touched, touched on this one, but acknowledge, empathize, and support cultural differences. And then finally, an awareness of how one's own experience influences how we, how we see others, for our own experiences and perspective. I talked about the ask and listen, but I'll repeat it because I think it bears repeating, ask and then listen. It doesn't just stop with the ask. It really takes that listening and then putting those pieces, that feedback into action, and take those, those pieces seriously. We talked a little bit about how there may be barriers that exist to involvement. So what steps can you take to eliminate or reduce those barriers? Some of those barriers may be pretty apparent, like language. Others may not be as apparent, such as things like childcare needs, transportation. We talked a little bit about it, but a, a lack of challenges understanding how to navigate the educational system in itself. And so eliminating or reducing those barriers can look like reducing those barriers, but also potentially reframing how, how you look at involvement. And that comes again, all those pieces and knowing about those barriers stem from the ask first. You don't know what those are until you ask. The next piece is affinity groups for both caregivers and students are focus groups. Ideally, each of these groups would have someone within the school community to act as a liaison. So that piece of, of someone they trust in the community to indicate those, those needs or desires, and then take those seriously as well, once they've been indicated. The next piece is representation. I have a, an idea that I like that comes from Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, who is known as the mother of multicultural children's literature. This idea of mirrors where you, one sees oneself, windows where you can see into another world, and sliding glass doors, which represent an invitation to learn with empathy and respect. And then final, the final last two, to partner with local organizations that already exist. Ashland has a number of organizations that would be great resources to partner with. I have some listed there. It's not an extensive list by any means. And then finally, to, to emphasize those unique gifts, talents, and interests that each of those communities brings to the table. And then in that aspect of including them, make that inclusion visible. A great example from Warren School is now, you might have seen outside as you're passing by, that welcome is displayed in multiple languages, right? It's really visible that these, this is a piece of our, the community and who we are. And then beyond that, I think, to be able to allow those communities to, to showcase who they are, and as I said previously, in an authentic manner, that does not feel performative, that it really feels like who they are. I gave a couple of examples previously about, about my own experience with, with sports, where it felt performative to say I like sports when I did not. And then to have it not just be one day where these things are celebrated, but make it a piece of, of every day, right? It's, it's ingrained into who we are because it is who we are. And so, as I said, these are actionable steps, but I, as a springboard, but I welcome obviously feedback. And I'm really looking forward to collaboration to move forward with, with some of these ideas. And thank you all for your time.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I mean, you can, can you can see why I thought this would be a good idea. Caitlin, you put so much work into this presentation as a volunteer on the site council, and it definitely spurred really good conversation in our site council room. And I know that the Warren School is continuing to work on events and, and ways to not stop this conversation, but find things to do. And I, I hope we do at, at this level as well. And, you know, we are here to partner with you if you want to keep talking to us about it or pointing us in a direction. And I'll see you myself, so we can connect on that. And does anybody else have any?
No, I just wanted to say thank you as well, too. It was a very thoughtful presentation and very thought provoking. I think, you know, that the exercise helping us try and step into the shoes of somebody else, who, somebody who's trying to acclimate to our system is a really important step for all of us to take. And it was, it was a great presentation. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Kristi, I don't know, you're online, but it, you know, I think you're one of the people that would be, you know, to connect with in what we're doing.
She's been texting me saying she's going to cut.
Get me to talk to that one.
Already done.
I don't know, Kristi, if you wanted to add anything or have, have any questions or comments?
Sorry, Caitlin, I think I got, just got, made you a much busier woman. But thank you. We appreciate you.
Go ahead, Kristi, if you want. Yeah.
No, thank you, thank you all for recognizing me. And thank you, school committee, for inviting me, whoever said, have Kristi Arnold there. And I'm sorry, I missed the presenter's name in the beginning.
Caitlin.
Because the sound wasn't working.
We'll get you all Caitlin's information.
Okay, Caitlin. So Caitlin, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. And if you're looking for, to support the schools more, I am always happy to have more assistance in this work. And so I, I look forward to talking with you more about the presentation. Thank you.
I would love to. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Caitlin.
Thanks, Caitlin. Really appreciate it.
Okay. So we are past six thirty, so it's time to get ready for, well, actually, do we have any Warren approvals? We have to take care of just a couple really fast things?
We can, we can.
We can do it at the, at the end.
Do it afterwards, yeah.
All right. Who's going to remind me?
I will.
Thank you.
Not me. I'm going to move and allow the select board to come up.
Yes, please. So, um, select board, come join us at the table, please. And then we'll get our meeting started. I thought, if you don't mind, you guys want to take these three seats right here?
Instead of people trying to check in, I can check in.
That would be great.
I've got mine. She's working on it.
I just got to grab it.
You really want, you still want some?
Well, three.
Hello, dear.
It's your time.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to pitch.
You sure am.
Are you proud of it or not?
Yeah, you got one.
I didn't mean look bad.
Yeah, you can put it over there.
The only thing that we do with it is like a bagel.
I don't like it anymore.
I know. Same.
That's why I wanted to make sure that I had these.
Joe, I think you and I have talked about the company coming up to the table, but somebody may, maybe they're going to be on camera. Joe, do you know where's the best spot for candidates, huh?
Candidates, if they go to the podium, that probably would be ideal.
Podium will be that. Is that going to work for you, Joe?
That's fine. That's fine. Have we spoken to the, uh...
Yep, I agree.
No, I didn't open anything about this process yet.
Okay, we're, we're all right.
And I don't know if you need to open your meeting and take attendance or anything.
I do.
Yeah.
My mic just texted, so there's no sound.
Yeah, because our mics are off.
All right.
Paul, are these mics working?
You didn't miss anything important. We were just talking about where people would sit and stand. So that's the first order of business. Candidates, except for anybody on Zoom, will be coming up to the podium. But I will turn it over to you for a minute, Mr. Mignani, Chair Mignani.
Thank you. Well, click at the moment. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's six forty-three, and I would like to open the portion of the select board meeting with our joint meeting with the school committee. So we're open. We don't need to vote.
Nope. And there's only three of us.
Yeah, there's only three of us.
There's three of you, you've got a quorum.
We have a quorum, so we're good to go.
And we have a quorum. One of the challenges is, thank you very much, Select Board, for being willing to join us here tonight. I'm trying to get ten people to find a free night. It's not easy. And as you can see, we weren't entirely successful, but we have enough people here to run a meeting. And I just appreciate you, you being the ones who are a little bit inconvenienced tonight. I'm sorry about that, but I appreciate you being willing to do this. For, for those of you who don't know, when we need to fill a seat on our board, by law, we enter into a joint appointment with the Select Board. And that is why we are all here. The decision will be equal across the board from our two boards. We'll all be asking you questions. And I'm going to share a minute about, a little bit about the process. So first of all, thank you for applying. We were so thrilled to see people with so much talent and interest. And there were many more of you in the beginning, and it was, it was still a lot of talent and interest. I mean, we would have been thrilled, we're thrilled for every Talent Bank form we received. And we welcome the, the four people that are still here. Thank you. I did try to share as much about this process as I could in advance, but I will say it out loud again. Each one of you is going to have a chance to give us an opening statement. We ask you to keep it to two minutes or under. I, I'm going to try to run this meeting without having to stick a timer in your face or put the hand up. If you go on too long with your responses, it's really just going to take away from your own overall time. So if you could try to stay within the limits, we would really appreciate it. If it goes out of control, you might see my hand go up. But that's only so that you, I can make sure that you have the full experience of getting to answer all the questions. So at the end of the day, after your two minutes, we're going to, one candidate at a time. It, we were going to ask for those of you who aren't being interviewed, except for Zoom, we're going to start with you, Katie, on Zoom. Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, I should have checked technically that we're good. So that it's fair to all of you. So everybody is only hearing the questions for the first time when it's your turn.
You didn't say what you're asking.
Yes, to step out of the room, when it's not your turn, but not yet. I'll let you know what the order of business is. So you'll each have two minutes for an opening statement when it's your turn. We have four questions that we have, I need to get you guys the questions. Oh, you have them? Okay, good. We have four questions that we're going to be asking you jointly from both boards. There will be opportunity for us to follow up on anything that you might say. We might ask you a couple just additional questions to follow up on something. And we certainly welcome any of your questions, if you have questions for us. It's not mandatory, but if certainly there's something that you want to know while you're here, you have the ability to, to ask that. And then you'll have a minute to close. And then just finalize your comments. And then we will have a conversation, a debate, a conversation. And, and then we, somebody will hopefully start making nominations, and then we'll start a voting process. That's how we plan to have the evening go. So does anybody have any questions about that? Or does anybody have anything to add that I may have missed? Joe, does that sound like what we, we talked about?
I'm looking at my notes.
Yeah.
You hit every one of them that we discussed prior to. So yeah, I think we're good to go.
Excellent. Okay. So I'm going to start with Katie on Zoom so that you can, if you join in later, you won't be hearing the question, you'll be hearing the questions for the first time when I start with you. So if you guys don't mind stepping out, you don't have to. It's a public meeting, and I just want to make that clear. It's your choice whether or not to go, but I'm trying to just be fair to everybody. We're going to call you back in in this order, and it's the order of how the applications came in. That's how we decided to do it. So it's, if you're alphabetical and you're always in the same place in your life, that's not tonight. So first will be Jonathan, then will be Marcy, and then will be Jennifer. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Katie.
Do you have a list of questions?
I do. Yes, I do. I'm going to, I don't know if we can get you to larger on the screen. Is that possible? Is that easy to, so we can see her and feel like we're talking to her in person?
What was the same question that you provided?
Yes. Go. Thank you.
And, and you can just pin Katie for now.
Yes. So Katie, you can start when you're ready with your opening statement, letting us know who you are.
Sorry, sorry. One second, one second. Why don't you pin, if you pin Katie, just put, there you go. Yep. There you go.
There you go.
Now we got it.
See a little bit better now. Yes.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. First off, thank you for letting me do this online. I have been sick this weekend, did not want to bring that there. So I appreciate it. Just a little bit about me. I've been a teacher for twenty-eight years, twenty in the last, the last twenty in public school. I have taught anywhere from K through fifth grade, most of my years being in fourth. I have my Masters in Education and my CAGS in Inclusion, something that has near and dear my heart over the last twenty years. I have two boys in the system right now. One is a sophomore at the high school, and one is an eighth grader heading to high school next year. You know, in our free time, we are on a field, on, in a rink somewhere, watching someone play some sport. It seems to be what our life is besides education. Here in Ashland, I was a part of the PTO board from two thousand thirteen to nineteen. I was the fundraising chair. I was a room parent often, especially at Warren. I just resigned from the Framingham Youth Hockey Board. I was a fundraising chair there for four years, where each year I was there, we raised upwards of twenty thousand dollars for scholarships and needed equipment and such. At school, I just took on a co-chair position. We received a grant from the state from the Accelerate, for an accelerated math academy over February and April vacation. And myself and another coworker, co-chairing and teaching in that. So that's a little bit about me and my...
Thanks, Katie. I'm going to start with the first question. And it is, have you ever served on the board or overseeing body of an organization before? And I know you just told us a little bit about that. But if so, how would you see that experience affecting your service on the school committee? And if not, is there another experience you've had that you believe is relevant to serving on this committee that has to make all decisions? on this committee that has to make all decisions by a joint decision-making process?
So not on a school committee board, but like I said, I just took on this new position as co-chair of this program. It is something I've always had in the back of my mind, is to move out of the classroom and on to, not necessarily bigger and better, but just a different position, different, seeing things from a different light. And my way of doing that was taking on this role to see if it was something I wanted to do outside of the classroom, take on a chair. Or, I don't know, different systems call them different things. We have our reading specialist or our math specialist. So I was looking at this as step in that direction. But other than that, I have not served on anything other than team leaders in school.
And Framingham Youth Hockey Board.
Yes.
My husband was on that board, that, you give yourself credit for that.
I'm not a good seller.
Yeah. I helped you out there. Okay, Tina, you've got the next question?
Sure. Thank you for being here, Katie. So what are the main issues that you believe our schools are currently dealing with, and how would you propose to address them?
It's kind of funny that the first thing we had tonight was that multicultural talk, because that's one of the things I've noticed at my own school and in Ashland. It's just a growing topic. It's not an issue, it's not a negative thing, it's a topic. And we do need to do better, no matter where we are, in reaching out to our, what is our client? Our families are our clients, and they need to be welcomed, first off and foremost. And then from there, how do we, as she was saying earlier, just how do we connect with that? And I find that one of the biggest things in life, not just in Ashland, in many districts. I've been lucky enough to have my children grow up in Ashland schools, and I think most of it has been very positive. I think there's just always room for improvement and to move forward, multicultural being one of them.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Paul.
Thanks for being here again, Katie, and hope you are feeling a little better. So our committee is most effective when all committee members respectfully share their unique and offering, often differing perspectives on an issue. Please provide an example of a group you've been a part of whose members did not agree. What helped move that forward towards consensus, and how did that process impact the potential outcome?
I think the different board, the different committees I've been on throughout the school years is really a great example of that. There's so many times that people don't agree. But the biggest part of that is having an open mind, seeing both sides, being an open listener. You know, your, your vision is not always the right vision, and to be able to hear others and be able to understand where they're coming from, whether you agree or disagree, it all needs to be heard first. So that's how we've usually, you know, in the committees I've been in at school, scheduling committee being probably the most contentious. It's, my building is grades four through eight, so you've got your elementary and your middle schools constantly butting heads. But it is keeping the kids and the students as the priority and listening to what's best for them.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie. And then, Joe, I'm not sure who's taking the Select Board question.
I'll just, I have, we have that one question that we, that we talked about earlier. And if individuals, Claudia and or Brandy have other questions.
Yes, absolutely. There's gonna be plenty of time for Paul.
But a main question that we have was, thank you, Katie, for being here and stepping up to try to fill the position on the School Committee. We greatly appreciate that. Very impressive resumes by all the candidates that are here this evening and your multiple activities. How would you find the time to dedicate and put forth time and effort towards being a vibrant member of this current School Committee? Though the School Committee meets twice a month, there is prep time and time and effort to follow up a work that needs to be done for prepare for meetings. And knowing that that's gonna take up time, would you have that time from your other activities that you have listed in your resume? And would you be willing to run for the position in May and then the following year? Because this is a unique position, where you have to actually run twice, back to back. So would you be willing to put that time and effort into it? And I know that's very difficult essay, because you haven't been on the board yet, but, you know, if you're gonna make a commitment, we'd like to know if that's gonna be a complete commitment.
I will say, when I was first brought to my attention that this seat was open, that was my first, I guess hurdle that I had to get over was I, you know, of course I wanna dip my toes in and see what it's like and, and obviously fight for this community. And am I willing to move on after that? And because I was just resigned from the hockey board, which did take up a bunch of my time, and I do have summers off, if that's what we're gonna say, because I know that's what the vision of teachers is, I do have that extra time. My boys are older now. This is something that I've thought about doing for years, but because my kids were little and needed us around so much more, I put it on the back view. So the fact that this opened up in this way was a little more enticing to me. So since they are older, and I did give up a recent commitment that took a lot of my time, I do believe I do have the time to be there. The only thing I would probably have in front of that is the boys. Am I willing to run later? Yes, I am, as long as it is a good fit for everybody, I am on board a hundred percent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie. Does anybody have any follow-up questions?
You know, I have a quick question. Katie, I just wonder if you could just talk a little bit, I think one of the important things with School Committee members really is that they sometimes are sort of the face of the schools in the community, and, or at least, you know, being out there, listening air, and, and could you just talk a little bit about your skill set in, in that regard and your connections to the community?
Again, not a great seller of self, but I do try, and anything the boys especially have been involved in, whether it be baseball, I ran the shack for a couple of years, you know, team mom and helping all the fundraising there. With high school sports, I've tried to assist in any way I can, the parents that are running, again, the snack shack, the fundraising and all that. My dad used to tell me when I was little, I was a social butterfly, and that was because I could talk to anybody, thanks to his guidance and the fact that he can talk to a wall. It's just something, I've always connected with people, and I think that's probably one of my biggest assets, is that I do listen and I do get along with what I think is everybody. So I would welcome the being the face of Ashland, or not the face, but one of the faces of Ashland's Committee. I think being, you know, being at events, being social, being visual is important in any school-related activities.
Thank you. Any other follow-ups?
So Katie, one thing about the position, particularly with someone like yourself that finds themselves in rinks and on fields with, with other families, is, once you're on the School Committee, you might have to give up a little bit of that time on those. Everyone else will think that you're there and, and you're, you're not just a mom at that point, you're not just there to, to watch your kids and, and the team. And so are you, is that something you've thought about and are prepared to navigate? It's not you, there's not, there's not a particular way to handle that? It's sometimes it's, hey, why don't we talk later? Sometimes it's, okay, let, let these people talk to you now, or vent, or whatever. Is that something you've thought about? And what were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have thought about that, because I feel like if I am at the rink, if I am on the baseball field, I'm there for, I'm in a parent hat at that point. And if someone does wanna talk business, I think that is something that we need to set aside and talk, you know, make that appointment or some type of a meeting for later. It has crossed my mind, and I do feel like I have enough, enough gumption to say, not now. I'm here as a parent and I'm watching my children.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. And any other follow-ups? And Katie, before you close, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so, not at this point.
Okay, awesome.
I'm sure it'll come up as, as the night goes on.
Well, and we're available to, you know, to always to, you know, check in with us, and we can give you some information. But for tonight, you have, you know, an opportunity just to make some final comments and let us know why we should pick you. I know that's hard for you, I get it. Ask me a bloody, we just had to sit on streets with our signs.
I can be social when I need to be, but then selling myself does not happen. It's, you know, I wonder sometimes how I've taught for twenty-eight years, because I can talk to kids all day long, but to adults, it's another story. No, I just, again, wanna thank you guys for this opportunity, and I look forward to hopefully serving this community even more. I grew up, I will say really quickly, I grew up a Marine brat, and I was in eleven different schools before I graduated high school. So that was one of my things, when we started, my oldest in kindergarten or in preschool, really, I said, that's it, we're not moving. My kid, I loved the life I lived, I think I gained a lot from it, I have friends all over the world. However, that's not the life of my husband and I, so my kids were gonna have a hole. And I'm so glad that it was Ashland. I'm so glad this is where we landed.
Thank you, Katie. You appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be Jonathan, if somebody would mind getting him. Thanks, Joe. Hello.
I thought it was lighter than I expected.
I know, everything around here does look very heavy. Exactly. I didn't tell you that that was one of the criteria.
So I assume this is where you guys need to be.
Yes, please, it's, because now you will be featured on TV, and you can watch it later.
So one second, if you could unpin Katie and pin, pin the podium.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, we should have, yeah.
So Jonathan, welcome again. You have your couple of minutes to just share with us why you're here, what your interest is, what your background is. We'll be asking you some questions, and then you'll have a chance for some final comments or questions.
I hope to keep this introduction a little bit short and sweet. I'm sorry, I actually missed a lot of your emails, so I didn't know about this. So I do have something prepared, so I'll try to go through this. So first of all, thank you, guys. My name is Jonathan Isaacs. I'm here today to be considered for the seat on the School Committee. In my personal life, I'm a husband and a father of three. One of my kids is actually gonna be starting in the Ashland school system this fall, so I'm really excited to be kind of engaged in that process a little bit more. I've been telling my wife, basically a lot of my background is saying, before I even knew what I wanted to be professionally, I knew I wanted to be a father. And a lot of what I do extends from that. So a lot of the engaging in the school, a lot of engaging in their daycares, I've been speaking a lot to their teachers, saying, hey, listen, I filled out these forms, please call me first if anything happens. As a dad, as some people might know, that is hard to do, there's a lot of default to fall into the mother. And I try to take that away from her, cuz she is like, I love being a mom, but you, you deal with it, you. And I'm like, that's great, I wanted them, so there. In my professional life, I am an engineer and a program manager. I work for Jable Innovation Healthcare and Development. We design, develop, and manufacture medical devices for all the different medical companies. I work with a lot of stakeholders in that position, including engineers, management in both my company and the various companies, and representatives from the FDA when it becomes required. We try to limit our exposure in that front, but obviously, since we're the designers, we can't really avoid it. And my position is to kind of coordinate all of that, make sure people know what they're getting, resolve issues, and I kind of carry that into pretty much all of my life. As a resident, I believe that many people actually choose Massachusetts. I'm personally born and raised in New York City. Many people choose Massachusetts because of the strength of the school system. And I believe that this school system is strong because of the relationships and the trust that are put in the educators. But the bonds that they kind of share between the educators, the parents, and the community at large, if you don't have a kid, you have to know you're going to be interacting with them for as long as they're in this community. So you need to have a vested interest into how they're educated, where the resources go to make sure that you have functional adults eventually in your community. And I enjoy being a part of that idea. I believe that my experience and my skills, kind of leading these cross-functional teams, understanding who the stakeholders are whenever you're in a situation, and then delivering for them while being a good steward of the budget, in this case taxpayers' money, will really translate well into this position. So with that, really, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you so much. We do have at least a minimum of four questions. We're asking the same questions to every candidate. And then you all have a chance to ask us questions if you'd like, and we may have some follow-up questions as well.
Yeah, fair enough.
So I'm gonna start with the first question. It's, have you ever served on a board or overseeing body of an organization before? If so, how would you see that experience affecting your service on the School Committee? And if not, is there another experience you've had that you believe is relevant to serving on a committee that has to make all decisions by a joint decision-making process?
Yeah, fair enough. No, I have not served on an official board. However, as I mentioned, I am a program manager that deals very extensively with various stakeholders and having to kind of corral them into a consensus. Typically, a lot of that comes down to understanding what the objectives are in any instance with folks, and understanding that even though you might be in that meeting with that agenda with some known objectives, you might have your own side objectives that the person who is leading that needs to understand. And the best way to understand that is ask questions, listen to answers, incorporate that into what the final goal should be, but then sometimes push it back and saying, hey, this is outside of the scope, but these are things that we can consider as we go forward, and then bringing everyone back in line to what the overall goal is without making anyone feel that their separate objectives are completely ignored, the voice is completely tapped down, because a lot of times they'll take that and turn it into kind of a stop on what the main objective is. So. And particularly in my current field, working with different companies, they come in with a budget and an expectation from that, but you have to understand, while you have a budget and outcome, sometimes they don't align, and really bringing that understanding of both needs and wants and definitions, in what is a need, as in, hey, if this doesn't happen, we are not successful, and what is a want, in that, hey, I, 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 I need this to be a thing, and if it doesn't, it's okay. So then saying, all right, that's a want, that's not a need. So let's realign on what the needs are, let's be good stewards of your money, and let's get you to where you need to be.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, I think I'm next.
Yep.
Thank you for being here, Jonathan. What would you define as the main issues that you think our schools are facing, and how would you propose to address them?
The main issues the school are facing, as I, I kind of said in my opening statement, one of the things that really brings people here is the strength of the school system. So I'm really thankful for this question, that you kind of bring up the issues. And as seen earlier in this meeting, I think one of the main issues is actually outreach, communication, and understanding that while school is an anchor that everyone has to be with, it is just that, it is the anchor. But you're gonna float around, you're going to be part of the wider community, and finding a way to bridge the gap between you have to be in school versus you have to actually engage with the larger community and understanding that there are goals in this one environment that kind of extend outside of the school. So really, bridging that communication gap, bridging that understanding gap, that what happens in the walls of the school, don't stay there. People go out, people have lives. What happens in the walls of the school or outside of the walls of the school, don't stay there. People bring in, you know, their backgrounds, they bring in their family history, they bring in their challenges, they bring in whether or not they had a good night's sleep. So really, understanding that it's not a vacuum, and kind of making sure that families, the community, and the people realize that it's a part of the larger entity.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul.
So our committee is most effective when all members respectfully share their unique and offering, often differing perspectives on an issue. Please provide an example of a group you've been a part of whose members did not agree, and what helped move that towards consensus, and how that process impacted the potential outcome.
Yeah, I don't know anyone's background here, I didn't really get a chance to hear, but I work with a lot of engineers. I work in very long-term projects, which can see the changeover from lead engineer to lead engineer. And if there's one thing to know about engineers, they have very strong opinions, and as much as they like to think logically, sometimes it's not always based in data. So, yeah. So in that, in one particular instance I've had recently, we had a changeover from one lead engineer to the another. one lead engineer to the another while we were in the middle of a phase. We had closed out a phase, the former technical lead needed to step off the project and kind of take on more responsibilities. While the new lead came in, reviewed everything the old lead did and said, this is not going to work. So you can imagine that the old lead, who was still a part of this, had some strong opinions as to why this would work. They put a lot of work into it, they took a lot of views. My responsibility in that was to one, calm down, say, hey, this is, this is everyone's baby. At the end, we're really trying to work here to make sure we get a good product. Now refocus from this isn't going to work or this is going to work to why? What are, what is the end goal? Let's re-talk about the end goal, let's talk about how we can get there. And I want you to tell me how this doesn't work equals we will not reach our end goal. And so bringing people into that focus, taking it a little bit off of the personal desires and experience. Um, of course, not forgetting them, because you, you don't want someone to feel like they're not being heard when they have those concerns. So voicing those concerns, backing it up with information that becomes actionable. That was my responsibility to kind of shepherd out of those engineers to get us to a consensus. Ultimately, we made some changes, we went back to our customer, we were able to say, hey, we've been working down this path, there are some things about this path that won't work. Let's talk about what will work to get us where you need to be with all of your different considerations, cost, budget, schedule.
Thank you. Select board?
Yes, thank you, thank you ma'am chair. Uh, Jonathan, first, thank you for stepping up and, and putting yourself out here to fill the positions, greatly appreciated. Always nice to see new blood. Um, the process that you just talked about seems like it may take a lot of time and effort on your part and the group's part. And with respect to that, um, you've dedicated a lot of time and effort to put into that program. Uh, to become a vibrant member of the school committee, though the school committee meets twice a month, there's a lot of prep time and a lot of things that need to be done before the meeting itself. And would you be willing to, or would you have the time to sacrifice that time to get everything ready to prepare yourself for these, for these meetings? And for other activities that you find yourself involved in as a result of becoming a member of the school committee? And um, would you have the time? And lastly, would you be able to run back-to-back years? Because this is, it's a, it's a unique position. And unfortunately, it falls that you have to run this may and then the following may as well. Would you be able to put that time into doing that and dedicating your time to that?
Yeah, uh, 100%, as I, I mentioned in my opening statement and really want to real highlight here, everything I do has been in the service of me being a father. And part of that I see as a natural extension of kind of getting involved in the process for my daughter entering the school system. Um, really getting engaged and making sure that she is getting in a system that, you know, works, works well, works efficiently. Doesn't necessarily have to work directly for me, because I am not the ultimate consumer, she is. Um, and by extension, the people that are going to be in that. So investing the time, investing the energy into kind of making that system better for her and by extension of everyone that consumes that system is really what I dedicate my time to. Um, I've been in customer calls where I say, hey, listen, I appreciate it, I'm getting a call from my daycare, I got to take this now. And understanding that, hey, I'm going to have to sometimes make a decision on where my priorities lie. For me, it's always the family and what's best for kind of getting them to grow, and this is a natural extension of that. So this is where I would invest my time and have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any follow-up questions? Do you have any questions for us?
No, I, I am more interested in the, the engineer talk there and.
You wonder why everybody looked at me?
You mentioned engineer and opinionated.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding. Uh, Paul's an engineer also, so we're familiar with that personality trait and we're very happy that he's here. So it's a, it's a good thing.
So on, on that front, have you found that with the uh, position being open, that there is kind of a skillset or a personality that you guys feel is lacking or would improve the board and the committee as a whole?
That's a really good question. Um, and it's interesting, because I've been trying to, you know, seeing the, the, the talent bank forms that came in for the four of you that are here today, you all have very impressive backgrounds, you bring a lot of passion. Um, so I've been thinking, how am I going, this is going to be a really hard decision, how am I going to make this decision? And what am I going to look at? And kind of trying to identify, what is it that we need on the board, right? Um, I think there are several things. You know, different, um, different skillsets in terms of, you know, our important functions of budgeting. Um, and so kind of understanding that budgeting process and figuring out the best use of our resources. You know, our, another function of the school committee is setting policy for the district, district-wide policy. And what does that mean? That can be in a whole host of different areas. So understanding, um, you know, an understanding of how the school system works and kind of some of the issues that the district is facing and the ways that we may need to address them. Um, and then, you know, the, the last is the hiring and, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Evaluation of, no, evaluation of the superintendent. Um, which, you know, it, he's, he's the jack of all trades. So, um, you know, kind of a, a big, a, a broader understanding, I guess, you know, in terms of the um, the workings of the school system and all of the different functions. Um, because somebody like our superintendent wears a million different hats in any given day. Um, so it's, uh, I don't know that I just, I don't know that I answered your question, but I'm trying to think, you're kind of in broad strokes.
It is a good question, because, um, and, and it's something we've all been, been thinking about. Because I don't know that there's a gap, but we look at everyone and, and, and need to be articulate. And you've spoken very well and, and, and you certainly have the passion. Um, and, and yeah, they, they all bring the different skills and, and knowing who we have here and, and uh, we have three lawyers on, on the, so we picked on, we picked on engineers, but we have three lawyers on, on the.
But we all have very different viewpoints and different lenses.
Uh, so yeah, it's, it's going to be very, I don't know that we have something lacking. I think right now, we, we do have, um, a lot of different perspectives and, and and we really trust and have great relationships with the other educators that sit on, on, at the table and there, there's, it's tough to have an answer to that, because, uh, you know, I don't have, uh, a particular, going into this, I didn't have a particular skill that it can be exactly translated to school committee. You know, I'm a, I'm a data person, I'm a logical thinker, I'm, I'm all those engineering quality kind of things, which help in some areas and, um, are potential liabilities in others. So there's, it, it's, it's not, and Claudia knows, because we're, I also chair a building committee that she's spent a few years on with me, so. Um, and so it's, it's a great question, there's just, it's, it's, it's not, it's, there's not a glaring thing.
I know, it's not one specific thing to put your finger on.
In fairness, reading the resumes, everybody bring, seems to bring something, we haven't talked to all of you yet, but everybody seems to bring something that we could really use and benefit from, no question about that. We, our three main jobs, we write policy, we handle the budget, and we um, we manage the superintendent. So those, those are the three main jobs, so you've got to be able to do all of those at least a little. And then some people who are expert in one or, or more are also really helpful to us. Or somebody that would fill a, a gap, we don't have a huge gap, but we, like we said, we have three lawyers. Do we need a fourth one? Probably not. You know, so in personality-wise, honestly, I mean, I think it's, as in any organization, it's uh, trying to find a good fit, we have a culture of respect. Uh, and we don't always agree, we've had disagreements and, and at some point or another, we might have find, found one another annoying, uh, uh, just for a second. But, uh, but we have a culture of respect, um, always. And so it's, it's got to be somebody who's willing to, uh, fit into that kind of atmosphere where you can safely disagree, but know that you're going to walk out the door and trust that the person was coming from the right place. We all want the same thing, which is all the things you said about making. We've all had kids that either are in school or have been in, in these schools. And people that have worked in our schools in one, in one way or another. And so we, we all have the same passion and as long as we remember where we're all coming from, then we trust that the person has good intentions, even though if you're coming from a different perspective. So, having said that, if anybody else has any, or if you have any more questions, we'll give you a chance to kind of sum it up. Why, why should we pick you? Help us out here, it's going to be tough.
Yeah, um, so, well, again, thank you guys for all of your time. Um, I believe that, you know, through the questions, through my experience, through what I can bring to the table specifically, being able to cultivate those relationships, being able to understand that the stakeholders aren't just the people that show up in the room, aren't just the kids in the classroom, isn't just the superintendent, it is the wider community. And being able to recognize that and being a voice for those folks as part of this. I believe that that is something that I bring unique to this. And then being able to bring it back to, we have to be good stewards of the money that comes in. We, you know, this committee doesn't really generate funds through anything other than taxpayers, I assume, there's probably other things. Um, but understanding that we have to be those stewards, we have to make decisions that help out our ultimate, um, end consumer, which is the students in the system and the parents that entrust their kids to the system. So.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you Jonathan.
Thank you Jonathan.
Next up is Marcy.
Marcy?
And, and it's fine to, it's fine to stay in, in the room now, that it, we, we asked that just so people didn't, didn't have a half an hour to think about, a really fantastic response that others didn't.
But it's not required, up to you. Hi, Marcy, yes, so we're using the podium this evening.
Love a podium.
Very official.
That means you're officially on TV now.
Oh, okay.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll give you a couple of minutes to tell us about your background and why you're interested in the school committee position.
Okay, good evening, thanks for having me, appreciate the opportunity to chat with you all tonight. My name is Marcy Culverwell. I am a mother of four, so I'll say that first. I have, uh, four children ranging in three schools through the Ashland School, so Mendez, I have two, I have one at the middle school and one at the high school. And I will be in three schools for the next eight years. So I'm here for the long haul, um, all my children started at Pittaway. So I started, you know, way back. Um, it took me nine years to graduate from Warren, let's just put it that way. I am the Senior Associate Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration at UMass Chan Medical School, which is a fancy title for CFO. I lead a team of approximately 60 people directly in finance, so budget, general accounting, payroll, bursar's office. I work with senior executive leaders of UMass Chan, um, also with the state, so I'm somewhat familiar with, um, state funding struggles, federal funding struggles. We're a, you know, a nonprofit institution. Prior to being at UMass Chan, I worked in public accounting for almost 14 years, so that's like a dinosaur, if you know anything about public accounting. I'm a licensed CPA for over 20 years. So, um, I love numbers, I love data, but I can see the gray in things, which I've learned from, you know, just leading a team of so many people and working with people across, um, the five campuses. So even though I'm at the graduate school, I work across with all the other university campuses. Um, and then I think the other thing to mention is that I have spent time um, working in the Ashland School Systems as a volunteer. I was a member of the Ashland Parent Council for approximately four years. I coordinated the communication among all the parents who volunteered for that. Spent time with, uh, Jim and Mike and others within town. Um, and so I have a vested interest. And though I'm not an educator myself, I did volunteer and teach smart money at Ashland High School for three years, uh, to the senior class. So that, so I, I really have a vested interest in teaching basic finance concepts to students, because I think it's just one of those things you should learn when you're young. Uh, so that's a little bit about myself.
Thank you. So we're going to start, as I said, there's four questions I'll ask the first. Have you ever served on the board or overseeing body of an organization before? If so, how would you see that experience affecting your service on the school committee? And if not, is there another experience you've had that you believe is relevant to serving on a committee that has to make all decisions in a joint decision-making process?
So yes, I do serve on, uh, the Board of Worcester City Campus Corporation and UHealth Solutions, which are both, um, non-state agencies that consolidate into UMass Chan Medical School. So I'm very, uh, attuned to working in a group. I would say that I, um, often have to deliver unpopular opinions. And so my approach to that is to listen, um, to try to gather as many facts as possible regarding a situation. I'm very fact-based and data-oriented. And I often like to tell people, like, I can present all the facts, it's up to you whether or not you want to listen to the facts as I've presented them. I think I'm very collaborative, I, I have to be collaborative in my role as a leader, uh, for my job. I have to be collaborative as a mom of four. I mean, like, nothing in life prepared me for raising three boys, so let's put it that. So there's a lot of negotiation in my life, I'm also married to an attorney, so I, you know, I, I negotiate a lot. But, um, in terms of the board, I think that that experience is very valuable, because especially in academia, people hold their opinions. Um, they're, they're very invested in their opinions. And I'm very invested in listening to all of the opinions. And so you really have to like, listen, I think mostly, before you come to a collective decision. But it's good to do your homework before you go in. I'm, I'm big on that, like, I like to know what I'm walking into. I like to get consensus before I go in with a final decision. And, um, in terms of board meetings, I really like to be prepared in talking to the people who it's going to ultimately affect. So one thing I see a lot is decisions made at the top that operationally you can't execute. And so it's really important to understand from the people doing the day-to-day how those policies, decisions, standards are going to affect what they actually have to operationalize. So I think that experience would help, um, in this role.
Thank you.
It's my turn. Thank you for being here, Marcy. Um, what would you, um, say are the main issues that, um, are, you believe our schools are dealing with? And how would you propose to address them?
So I think, um, one of the issues would be just the changing population within Ashland. I know when I was part of the Ashland Parent Council, that was a discussion that came up a lot, equity and access um, for the students, and you can even see it in the, the neighborhood, like the neighborhood I live in. You know, my children's friends are not just people that look or act like myself. And I think that, um, much like the presentation given tonight, like, there's a lot of things to think about in terms of how to connect people and be aware of, um, you know, how the education is, is given out. And I won't pretend to know how to do that directly as a parent. I think it's important to teach my children, you know, to, to be accepting of other children. Um, but I, I think that, you know, again, it's a listening exercise in my mind. In terms of, um, other issues, I do think that like burnout and teacher burnout is a potential issue. I know I see a lot of that where I am at, from a workplace. Just going through COVID was such a massive undertaking for all of the educators. And I think it's a different environment, and I'm speaking as a parent, it's a different environment watching my children. Like, my third and fourth grader are great readers, they cannot spell. And I've been assured by their teachers, they can't spell because they didn't have fundamental phonics in the same way in kindergarten and first grade when COVID hit, right? So there's a different way, like, I have to approach being a parent and helping them at home and work with their teachers to help them at home. So I think kind of that aftermath of, you know, how can we support the teachers as parents and help them not to burn out, it would be another thing, um, that I think is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks for being here, Marcy. Uh, so our commu, our committee is most effective when all members respectfully share their unique and often differing opinions on prospective issues. Uh, please provide an example of a group you've been a part of whose members did not agree. And say what helped move you towards consensus and how that process impacted the potential outcome.
Okay, well, I feel like I have a PhD in this, because I was an auditor for 14 years, so I delivered bad news for a living. Um, but I will say, like, I work with, um, the faculty at UMass Chan often. So chairs of the departments, as well as the faculty who work under them. And I think what has helped me in working with them, and a concrete example would be, you know, just the budget issues we're facing. We've had unprecedented inflation for multiple years in a row. And investments haven't kept pace with that, revenue growth hasn't kept pace with that. Um, how do you distill financial information to non-financial people who just care about their science so much? And enable them to continue with their science? And one way I've done that is bringing facts about, here's the trends, here's what we've seen, here's what we've chose to invest in as a group. How do we prioritize our decision-making, um, to service the whole as well as the individuals leading their departments? Um, and work through that. And I, again, I bring a lot of facts to, you know, what I'm dealing with. And I, again, I bring a lot of facts to, you know, what I'm dealing with. I try to lead with information. You know, they're very, very, very smart people, so they poke holes in things right away. And I just try to be really prepared. So, that's really how I deal with it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chairman Yanni?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marcy, nice to see you. And thank you for stepping up and wanting to be a part of the school committee. In your earlier presentation, you stated that you like to be prepared and get all your facts, you know, get your ducks in line. And that goes towards the question that we have for you. How would you find the time to dedicate and put forth the effort in becoming a vibrant member of the school committee where they meet twice a month and they always prepare themselves and they have work to do before each meeting? So, there's a lot of preparation time. So, I take it that you're not unfamiliar with preparing yourselves for meetings? So, you may have already answered this question already. But with all the activities that you have, would you be willing to take that time away from what you're currently doing to bring forth to the school committee? Because it's going to take a lot of your time and, you know, added time to it. And lastly, because this is a new, it's just the way if this position falls in, you'll be running in May, and then the following May, you'll be running again. Would you be able to dedicate that time into this position, knowing that it's going to take away from other things that you probably would like to do with your family and our work?
Yep. So, I did think about that before I threw my name in the hat for this. I will say with my youngest being nine, this sounds crazy, I do believe I have the time to dedicate toward it. I'm very good at multitasking. You have to be good at multitasking when you work full-time and you have four kids. And one of the reasons I'm good at multitasking is because I live in Ashland and I have a village. And the village works, and we support each other. And so, I think we have a commitment as a family to invest in our community. I think I'm at the point in my life where I want to get reinvested again in a more, I don't want to say I'm not invested now because I am, like, I am with the kids, but in a more structured way where I can potentially make an impact and take my professional experience and my mothering experience and offer perspective.
Thank you.
And yes, I'm willing to, you know, run.
Any follow-ups? Claudia?
I'm just curious if you have thought about any similarities or dissimilarities between higher ed and K-12 education?
So, I think there's the same struggle in engagement in terms of, like, finding the right path for moving forward because there's so much accessible now in the COVID world. And as parents, like, how do you funnel that and pinpoint that and get people in the right frame of mind to embrace the world as it is, but then also get direction on which way to go? Because there's such a big path. I think the funding struggles are real for both sets, for sure. And there's so much demand, but not the same growth in the revenue to cover the demand. So...
Any other follow-up questions?
Marcy, just, you know, you obviously have spoken and you're in the finance profession in higher ed, and it's kind of piggybacking on what Claudia said. Do you know, you know, you obviously haven't been in the job and done the work here, but from an outside lens, how do you see that, those similarities and that translation of that skill set helping here? And I know you, not being, not having done it, it might be difficult to answer that, but...
Well, I have a lot of experience in creating standards and policies. So, as part of what I do at the medical school, I have to work with the other campuses to help inform policy that governs the University of Massachusetts and then create working operational standards that, like, we can live in from a campus perspective. I think that that experience in understanding business processes and how they affect the day-to-day operations from a governance perspective would help me. I also think just my experience in dealing with so many different people across so many of, the campuses are just so different. I mean, frankly, like, the medical school is a graduate medical education. You know, our student population is not the high school student coming out and going into college. It's the, well, I have two kids and I'm, you know, going to become a doctor. And it's just such a different set of challenges. I also think there's a lot of challenges with, like, mental health and burnout that we deal with. And I think that that also translates somewhat, maybe on a lesser scale, but somewhat into what people, you know, are coming out with on this side. So, I think there's a lot of parallels that can probably be drawn. I think as I become more familiar, you know, I could help find them.
Great. Thanks.
I have one little follow-up because I'm just curious, a little, I'm curious about the work that you did when you were on the Ashland Parent Council. Can you explain, A, what that is for everybody so we all know what it is and what you did a little bit with that?
Sure. So, the Ashland Parent Council is a group of individuals who met with Jim once a month for, I want to say, like, two, maybe three, two to two and a half hours every month. And Jim would bring us kind of an overview of what was happening in each of the schools. And we would also bring information to Jim that we were hearing from the community, if there were areas of concern or applause or, you know, I think we gave out, like, stars to things that we thought were going well. And so, I got recruited in by someone I knew in the community who had been on the committee for several years when my children were in Pittaway because they were looking for, you know, people who had younger children in the school system. And then, I think a year in, I took over the, kind of, the communication and helping Jim, you know, disseminate what was going to be on the agenda for the meetings. I also did a lot of outreach about the Mindas, the New Mindas School, within the parent community. So, I sent a lot of emails. I got a lot of people drummed up to go to Town Hall. I got a lot of, I also will say, my parents and my mother-in-law live in Ashland. I got a lot of the senior community to go to Town Hall, too. And so, I just think the, like, various perspectives I have through my, you know, just my neighbors and my family, we would bring us all, as the parent council would bring those, you know, kind of perspectives to Jim.
Thank you. Any other questions? Marcy, before you close, do you have any questions for us?
So, I guess my one question, because I did ask a bunch of questions, would be, like, what are your immediate goals as the school committee coming up in the next year?
That's a loaded question. Everybody's looking at me.
The first one is to actually vote on our strategic plan.
Exactly. We have been working on a strategic plan for quite some time. We had hired an outside agency. We had multiple forums and meetings, and Jim and Mike have worked with the staff. I mean, a lot of time and effort has gone into this, and we're just on the verge of being able to vote on it, I think, at the next meeting, hopefully, right? If everybody agrees that it's in its final form. So, that will be the document. I mean, a lot of the things that you mentioned, sort of, the mental health and well-being of staff and students, communication is always a big, a big goal, curriculum and that sort of thing. And there's a lot of other details in there that I'm not going to be able to recite right at the moment. But I think implementing that plan, I mean, that's a big undertaking when you get a new plan, then all the site councils have to make sure that they've aligned what they're doing in their buildings with the plan. And then, it trickles down, you know, to the classrooms. And so, that would be sort of the major focus over the next couple of years. And the same thing that everybody else is talking about, getting back on track after COVID, even though it's been four years, it feels like we're just coming out of it. And just trying to engage with the community and make sure that we're meeting their needs and also reminding everybody that we're all here for the same reason, which is to really make Ashland, and in our case, Ashland students, have the best possible experience.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if you want to give us final words about why we should choose you, we'll hear them.
Okay. Well, I will say, piggybacking on your answer, I was involved in setting the strategic plan, the five-year plan for UMass Chan. So, I did go through that exercise, and I was kind of second on the operational excellence piece of it, which is the administrative function of that. So, I do have experience in going through that process. I guess as a closing remark, I'll just say, although I married into this town, I have lived in it for 17 years, and my husband grew up here, his parents grew up here, his grandparents grew up and went, I mean, I think one of his grandparents, Pittaway was their high school. So, we're in the community, we're going to be in the community, and I will be, you know, present whether I'm chosen or not. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay.
Yep.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, there.
Welcome back. Thank you, especially for your patience.
Yeah. Sorry to make you wait so long. I see that I got the maroon memo.
Exactly.
You have the right color on, I know.
Yes. Thank you for being here. You have a couple of minutes to tell us something about yourself and why you're interested in the position, and then we'll ask our questions.
Happy to. So, my name is Jennifer Gordon. Most people call me Jen, which is great. I've been an Ashland resident for 23 years. My husband, Ethan, runs a small web design and development company here in Ashland, and we have two wonderful children. Our daughter Abby is a Ashland High School graduate of the class of 2022 and is living her best life in Chicago at college now. And our son, Mitchell, is a high school freshman this year. And some of you know Mitchell and have known him since he entered Ashland preschool as a three-year-old, and it's really hard to imagine that he's where he is. But he's doing really well, and we're really, really pleased with the experience we've had here for both of our children who have very different educational profiles and experiences. Professionally, I work as the Director of Applied Research and Program Evaluation at the UMass Donahue Institute. I lead a team of about 20 research professionals doing grant-funded and contract-funded projects on topics related to education, public health, human services. I myself have 25 years of experience as a researcher with a real strong focus in education reform and improvement initiatives, including I led the seven-year program evaluation for the Massachusetts Reading First Program, which was a federally funded grant program under the Bush administration. More recently, I've had some work or some work experience with some Massachusetts initiatives focused on improving district leadership, the new superintendent's induction program that Mr. Adams actually participated in, as well as companion programs to that, one being the District Governance Support Project, which was led by MASC. So, I have some experience. And just through my, through my years of research in this education realm, I have a lot of just general kind of knowledge and awareness of how education works here in Massachusetts, the roles of school committees and administrators. And I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today and answer your questions because I think I could, I could have a lot to contribute to the board.
Thank you so much. And I'm starting with the first question.
Sure.
Jen, have you ever served on the board or overseeing body of an organization before? And if so, how would you see that experience affecting your service on the school committee? And if not, is there another experience you've had that you believe is relevant to serving on a committee that has to make all decisions by a joint decision-making process?
Sure. I have a couple of experiences. One older, before I had kids, for many years, I served on the Board of Directors of the UMass Amherst Alumni Association, and I was an officer of that organization. And so, there was lots of joint decision-making, and we had to work closely with the Alumni Affairs Office. So, I also understand that kind of role of board and executive and how those pieces relate to each other. But I think more recently, maybe, and more relevant because it's here and local, is I served as a leader in Congregation Shavuot Shalom, which is our Jewish congregation here in Ashland. I served on the board for six years, and three of those years I was the president. So, I know a lot about trying to listen to and be open to different perspectives, to really consider and think about the needs of an organization, big or small, about understanding that the thing that may be best for me may not be the best for the organization or for everyone that I represent. So, having to kind of bring your own perspective in the things you've learned from your own experiences, but also to be able to set them aside and think about the broader good and the broader interest. So, I've had, I have a lot of experience in that board realm and I think, and thinking about policy and thinking about being analytical and strategic, I think all those things would serve me well.
Thanks.
My turn, right?
Yep.
Thank you for being here, Jen. What are the main issues that you believe our schools are currently dealing with? And how would you propose to address them?
So, I think the one we all acknowledge and continue to talk about and was evident in the meeting today even was, is the growing population and the diversification of our population here in Ashland. And I think we could talk about that for ages and ages. I think there are other things that are coming down the pike that we'll really have to deal with. One in particular, I think, is artificial intelligence. And I think we're going to have to put a lot of thought as a board and as administration into what are our policies around student use of AI, of faculty and staff use of AI? So, what policies and procedures we're going to put in place? How are we going to teach students to be effective and responsible users of those tools? So, not just, like, laying out you can do this, but not that, but really thinking about how do we take this tool, which is going to be really part of their future and probably part of all their working life, and teach them about that? So, I think that's one. I think, oh, I know, when the new Secretary of Education in Massachusetts has a number of priorities that will probably trickle down to us, third-grade reading is a big one. We're still, you know, continuing to, like I mentioned, I worked on Reading First under the Bush administration. We were trying to solve third-grade reading, and here we are again. I know, you know, it was interesting to me in reviewing the materials on the website from the school committee, the equity review, for example, cites our reading curriculum as a strength. I also know that the State Department of Education considers our reading curriculum to be low quality. So, I don't know which is right, but I do think that there's going to be a push for us to look at that and to really think about, is that the right reading curriculum for our community? But ultimately, it will be our decision. It's because of local control. So, I think third-grade reading is going to be another that we're really going to have to focus on. So, those are two. I think there are others, but...
Thank you. Paul?
Thanks, Jen. Our committee is most effective when all members respectfully share their unique and often differing opinions and perspectives on an issue. Please provide an example of a group you've been a part of whose members did not agree and what helped move towards consensus and how that process impacted the potential outcome.
This is a good question. I need to think about it for a moment, but I don't want to think about it too long because I know we don't have a lot of time. I think even professionally, I face that. So, I'm the Director of one of 10 business units in my organization, and we all have different priorities for the work that we do and for our units. And we spend a lot of time in directors' meetings thinking about how we lead the organization as a whole. And sometimes we have, we have very different opinions about how to proceed. I think a key part of that is really going around and letting everyone have their voice be heard and then trying to think about and find where's the in-between and where are the middle grounds where folks can compromise? And then, also being able to recognize, or for people to recognize, when maybe their opinion is the minority opinion and it's really not going to go that way, and it's time for them to let it go and let the group move forward with the decision. I can't, off the top of my head, think of, like, a very specific circumstance where that's been the case, but I think we try to operate in that way. And I try to be respectful of understanding other people's perspectives and what they might need to get out of a particular decision and how can we, how can we reach agreement? But I think that respectful part is really important. And I know how much you've all really worked to cultivate that among, you know, within your board, within your committee, but also in relationship to the administration and how unusual that can be here in Massachusetts. We see lots of circumstances where school committees and superintendents are at loggerheads, and there's all sorts of drama. And what we know is that that gets in the way of the kids and learning. And that's not the kind of... among, you know, within your board, within your committee, but also in, in relationship to the administration, and how, um, how unusual that can be here in Massachusetts. We see lots of circumstances where, um, school committees and superintendents are at loggerheads, and there's all sorts of drama, and, and what we know is that that gets in the way of the kids and, and learning, and that's not the kind of environment we want.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jen, nice, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for stepping forward and, and wanting to, uh, become part of the school committee. You, all of you have had an unbelievable, uh, resumes that were presented, and I'm just extremely delighted to see the, uh, the level of experience and professionalism that has come, that has come forward from all of you. With respect to that, it takes a lot of time and effort to do this, this position.
It does.
Your resume shows that you're heavily involved on a lot of things that need to get done, and, and so my question to you is, um, would you have the time? Because they meet twice a month. We talk about preparation. The school committee definitely prepares for their meetings and for other, uh, aspects of what they wanna see come forward. Would you be willing to put that time aside out of your personal life and family life? And because this is a unique position, would you be willing to make the effort to run for office in May? And then the following year, again in May as well? And that's a lot of time and effort and, and planning for all of you folks that, that want this position. And so, I, I'll ask.
So, I thought a lot about that, actually. Um, and I, I think for me, this, this is the right time and the time that I can do that. I, I will tell you that I had, the last time that there was an open seat, I thought about it for a moment, and I had just agreed to be President of Shavuot Shalom, and I knew that I could not do both of those things and do both of those things well. That, you know, that time for me has passed. You know, I, I'm still involved in the congregation, but I'm not as active as a leader, um, and I'm ready to move on to, to kind of my next public service challenge. My job is demanding, but also quite flexible in the position that I'm in. I work primarily from home here in Ashland. Um, I have a lot of control and flexibility in my schedule and the ability to, to shape that around my other commitments, so I have that, that ability. Um, I am a state employee. I have tons of paid time off, uh, which I don't use enough of, um, and certainly, you know, could use if, if I needed to for things like that. So, I, I do think it's a time that's right for me. I, I'm down one kid. That saves a lot of time. And so, and my, my husband's also, you know, he works here in town, and so, um, it gives us quite a bit of flexibility and, and ability to juggle multiple things, and I'm, I'm ready for that challenge. I, you know, do, do I love the idea of campaigning and running for office? No, but, um, but I, it's something I'm willing to do if, you know, if I can be of service to my community through this role.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any follow-up questions they'd like to ask?
I, I have one. So, you're obviously very involved in a lot of research around education and things like that. If you're on the school committee, uh, you might have formed some opinion based on that research, and you kinda alluded to it earlier, but how do you, do you, do you see there being a, a, a challenge internally within yourself to trust the educators and the data we're collecting locally to make local decisions that might not always align with what is coming out of research or other things that you're obviously involved in and, uh, and to a level that other people aren't?
Sure. I think that's a, that's a really, really good question. Um, first, I'll say, I, you know, I've, I've been involved in education research for more than two decades. I don't consider myself to be an expert in any shape or form, and I have great respect for our education professionals who are running our district and managing the day-to-day. Um, and so, if nothing else, I am very analytical, um, and very thoughtful. And so, I don't typically take something that I might have learned in one context and assume it applies in another. Um, I'm gonna wanna see, I'm gonna wanna see the data from Ashland, right? So, there's, you know, third grade reading, we know is a statewide priority. What, what do the numbers look like now in Ashland, you know? And what do the trends look like, and do, how do we need to think about that? Um, you know, I'm, I'm gonna wanna see that, and I'm gonna wanna hear from our professionals, um, both in the central office and in the buildings, to hear what they're seeing and what they're experiencing and what their recommendations are. Um, I, you know, I do very little of my own research now. I mostly am an administrator in the group, um, and my job is to make sure that, that the team that I have uses good methods and produces quality products for, for our clients. But I don't, I don't often form opinions about their work. So, it might, you know, uh, then again, if there's something useful that we've generated that can help the discussion, I'd also like to bring that forward.
All right, thank you.
I have less of a question and more of just a side note, since you brought up literacy and data and looking at the data here. Um, literacy is a passion of mine, too. It's an issue that I've, um, you know, always had, had a great interest in, and our district has done amazing things with literacy over the past couple of years, um, and the, the changes they've made to the curriculum, the data they're collecting, the investment of the teachers and the administrators, and, um, so whether you land on this seat or not, I think you're gonna love to dive into that data, because it's, it's impressive, the work that they're doing. So, just had to, to, it's, it's been a, it's been a mountain that they've moved, and they've done a really great job at it, so I just need to point that out, too.
Any other follow-up questions? Jen, do you have any questions for us?
Not really. Um, you know.
You've been doing your homework.
I've been doing my homework. I, I was at the last meeting, I picked your brain with a couple of questions about, you know, time commitment and, and those kinds of things, because that very much was on my mind, um, and I gave that a lot of thought in between. But no, I, I don't really have any questions for you. I think I'm, I think I'm ready.
Okay, so you have some time to just make some final remarks?
Sure. Well, I, I, first, I just really wanna thank you for the process that you've laid out, um, and hearing from, from folks. I was, I was both excited and daunted that we had ten people who were interested, and so I think, you know, clearly, we're, um, moving through this a lot quicker than we would have with ten people, but it was still really heartening to see that so many people were, um, interested in participating. Um, I come to this opportunity with no particular agenda, um, other than thinking that my skills and experience might be of some service to my community, um, and wanting to, um, find it, find a new way to contribute, um, to, to Ashland, which is now, I've lived now in Ashland longer than I've lived anywhere in my entire life. So, um, I feel very much at home here and very much committed to this community, and would love to, to serve on the school committee, um, for a few months, and then hopefully, if the, if the voters agree, for a year, and then turn.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it is a bit of a daunting process, but we all survived it up here, five times for me, and I'm happy to give anybody any, uh, feedback on, on that process.
Great.
But, but thank you for stepping up and being willing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, well.
All right, folks. So, now comes the hard part. You now, you can all take a breath of, no, no, you can stay. If you want to, it's not required, but you're, it's an open meeting, and you're welcome to, um, to stay. I'm gonna open up the discussion, but I just wanna say, um, very sincerely, I, and Jim knows this, I, I mean, I've served on multiple superintendent committees, because I've been here so long that I think I've been through seven superintendents, and then all the interviews in between. I've been out with some of you on committees for principals. Um, I, I've been on a lot of committees at this point for hiring, and usually, like, one or two people rise to the top and the decision feels pretty clear. And I just wanna say that I would be really happy to serve with all of you. Um, I, I'm not sure where the discussion is gonna go, but I just think you're all super professional. You're engaged in the community. You're dedicated to your kids, like, all the things that we would want. You all have a little bit of a different skill set, um, but I could see any one of those, you know, being useful to the board. Um, and I just wanna thank you and encourage you to stay involved. I wish we had four open seats. Um, and, and things do happen. I mean, seats open, and people change their mind, and if you can just, if it's not your night tonight, um, you know, I wouldn't wanna lose the engagement of any one of you, because I was really impressed with, and I, I think probably some of my colleagues would agree, if not all of them. But, but unlike any other hiring situation I've been in, I really would be happy to, to serve with any one of you. Having said that, um, we have to make a decision. So, I'm just gonna open up the discussion for just general thoughts and feedback and guidance. Um, who wants to?
Yeah, I mean, uh, this isn't lip service. This is gonna be the hardest decision we made. I've been on here for a while. We've gone through COVID. We've talked about programming changes that this community didn't want. We, we've had lots of different things we've talked about that were tough conversations. You, you, you're all bringing unique perspectives. Uh, you, you, you're all very qualified and, and would, would do well. So, it's, it, it's like laying out four pieces of, you know, delicious chocolate and say, which one, which one do I want? And, and you can't choose, and so, uh, that's not lip service. So, hopefully, like Lori said, whatever comes out tonight, and I don't even know where we're gonna, where we're gonna start, but, uh, but, but stay engaged and, and, and hopefully, uh, yeah, just stay engaged, please. So, who, who wants to start with any thoughts? What about you, Joe?
Well, I have to tell, thank you, thank you, Paul. Uh, looking on the town side of it, this is, this is a very difficult decision. It's gonna be for me, anyway. Um, you're all remarkable. Every single one of you have, like, like they've all said, you have special traits and special, uh, uniqueness. And, um, don't let that be, don't let the decision that's made tonight stop you from staying engaged in town activities. There are other committees. There are other groups that are looking for vacancies to be filled. And it's always good to start low and work your way up, you know, so that way you've got a, you know, a grassroots look at it. Uh, 'cause maybe it may not be what you're looking for time-wise and stuff. So, uh, to start right off the top, you know, you're just, it's like having triplets the first time, not having, you know, not having children, then all of a sudden you have triplets. You don't know what the difference is from one to three, so it's all the same. So, you know, start slow and, and work your way up type of deal. But please don't let this hinder your decision not to stay actively involved in the community, especially with town things that are going on. You all seem that you wanna stay actively involved. Let's, let's hope it stays that way. And on behalf of, uh, Rob Shearer, our Chair, and our Vice Chair, Yolanda Greaves, they unfortunately can't be here this evening because of, uh, prior family commitments, uh, but they, uh, they all wish you all very well and much success, and, uh, they wish you the very best of luck in tonight's proceedings. Unfortunately, they can't be here.
No, we, we appreciate it, and we know how hard it is to. We, we're missing a, a member as well. So, we're gonna do the best we can.
So, I mean, I, I guess we need to get down into it, right? So, uh, the, this is, this is a challenge. I try to look at what each would bring to the committee, right? Right now, uh, as we're constituted, we don't have any, I think I have the youngest child and can be leaving middle school next year, right? So, um, if there's a gap, okay, we don't have a parent of small children. Uh, we don't have an educator, uh, on, uh, the committee, right? And so, uh, so I, and there's just so many, this is a, this is a, it's very difficult, because I can literally go through these things and I can make an argument for each one of you. Uh, and I guess it's gonna come down to what I think is going to be unique, um, and valuable to the, uh, to the committee. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's really tough. I, I think we have some, some young energy. You don't even have a student in the district yet, and you're stepping forward, so that's awesome. And don't lose that energy or passion. You, you're up there, and you're, you, I love the energy. And, uh, but I guess if I'm kinda saying with a, trying to marry what I think would really gel well with, with, with us, um, from a, what would fill a gap or, or, or really add, uh, add something to it, I guess my, 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 my top two are probably Katie and, and, um, and Marcy. I think 'cause of those two things that I, I can see as literal gaps that we don't have. Uh, for a while, I was the, one of the, you know, younger parents and had kids in elementary schools and, and things like that. Uh, so Marcy has that. Marcy also brings, uh, the, probably a, a very quick understanding of the municipal finances. And not only our municipal finances, 'cause this is one of the things that I've always said, and we've had conversations about this, is that I wasn't elected by the parents of Ashland, right? I was elected by Ashland. We have a, a focus on, uh, on the schools and, and that budget, but we have to understand how that impacts us as a town. And, uh, we, we as a town don't succeed if, if both the, uh, uh, both sides of that municipal budget don't work. So, I think she would bring something there. She would be, uh, someone with kids that are, are in the, in the experiencing going through those, uh, those elementary schools. Uh, and, but I also see that one of the things that was a great lens is an educator, and, you know, somebody that lives it every day in another district, being able to see that, but also be a parent here, uh, involved in the community, and so Katie would fill that gap. And, uh, and I think that's a lens why we have two, you know, educators that sit at the table that we respect and, and value their opinion. They're not living the classroom life, and, uh, I think that's an incredible lens, not only to, just 'cause it's that, but it's a, it's a different district and, 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 and living that, and it happens to be an elementary, uh, experience, too. So, it's so tough, but, you know, Jen has all that, uh, experience with the, the policy. You know, I'm, I'm the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, right? So, uh, your, your educational background in that, and, uh, but I guess I could make the same argument for, for Marcy and some of the policy stuff you deal with, right? Uh, there's just so much that each candidate would bring, but I, I guess if I'm valuing the, the things that would fit right into areas where we could use that, uh, I, I guess that's where I'm leaning, but, uh, you know, like we've talked about, if, if there's compelling interest in any one of the four, I think we'd be great, so.
Yeah. Um, honestly, I've been dreading this discussion for days, because you're all amazing, and this is really difficult to have to choose only one of you, because you each bring such phenomenal strengths. You bring, each of you in your presentations tonight and in what you've submitted to the committee, bring incredible passion and dedication to our district. And so regardless, again, of what happens tonight, I, I echo everybody else's sentiments, and I hope your involvement and desire to be involved doesn't change. You know, when I was listening to all of you speak, I was thinking of, you know, the, the things that kind of rose to the top for me, kind of like Paul said, in terms of things that I thought would be, uh, a really beneficial lens or, or, um, you know, uh, skill to bring to the table, um, you know, both as a, a great perspective, but also to be able to help you hit the ground running, since we're in the midst of, uh, of a, of a, of a school year and kind of in the midst of our, um, session, if you will. Um, and, you know, a couple of things that stood out to me about Marcy, um, A, your, the finance experience that, that Paul described. I think, you know, we're entering budget season, and so kind of understanding the, the intricacies and the nuance of the federal and state budget process. It's its own animal. And so having an understanding of that, I think, is, is really helpful. Um, you know, your perspective as a parent of students in multiple different schools, I think, is very valuable. Um, you know, we've talked about this before. Many, many of us, those of us who, on the board, who currently have kids in the, in Ashland Public Schools or either in upper, middle, or high school. And so, we see from their perspective and as a parent perspective, how school is different after COVID. But none of us have that lens as a parent of what it's like for a third grader, right? Um, it's different. School's different after COVID, so kind of understanding. And you mentioned a little bit of that when, when you were talking, that, you know, because of COVID, their reading instruction was different. It was interrupted for a while. So, there's things that have to be backfilled, and what does that look like? Um, you know, your familiarity in having already worked in some capacity with the district in terms of the work that you did with the, um, Parent Advisory Council. And I think those are all really valuable things, um, to bring to, those, those really stood out to me. In, in, you know, you all stood out to me, but those were some things that, you know, um, that I, I feel would, would be valuable, um, to bring to the table. I agree with you that Katie's perspective as a teacher would be a really important voice to have as well, too. And, yeah, those are, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Tina. Uh, anybody else wanna weigh in before I say anything? Claudia?
Uh, no, I was just gonna reiterate, really, um, what a great group of candidates, uh, of the community has had before us tonight, and, uh, how much I appreciate everyone's interest in, in our community. And it, just really what a powerful group you are. Um, it made me, it certainly makes me feel like, boy, what am I doing here? But, uh, so I really thank you for your interest, and, uh, thank you for all that you bring to our community, regardless of how you serve it, even just be, by being a community member. And, uh, you know, I, I. And, you know, I, our school committee, I appreciate all their work and everything they've done to get us through COVID and that, and I know that no one will judge you harshly by what has to happen this evening. It is indeed just unfortunate, it can only be one person.
So I'll just, I'll just say a real quick thing, just because, you know, we're on the municipal side, we work very closely with the school committee, especially when it comes to the budget. This is, we are going into what probably will be a tough budget season, I don't know how the schools are kind of shaping up, but I know on the municipal side, we're probably coming into a tight budget season. And one of the things that I love most about our community is that the schools and the municipal side have this really great partnership. It's, you know, we have a financial policy about how we allocate any revenue that comes into town. You hear other communities arguing about how, you know, one thing over another, like the municipal side wants a building, like a public safety building, and the schools want a new elementary school. In our community, we did both, because we felt that it was important that we support both municipal and the school side. So, you know, I, so I've gotten to know the members of the school committee pretty well. They're a really great group of people, I just have to say that, because they won't say that themselves, because, you know, selling themselves. But I am just blown away by the four of you, because this has been a really great night. And I would encourage all of you, even if you don't get appointed tonight, to run in May. It's going to be an open seat, it actually will be an open seat. So, you know, we talked about staying connected, but still, like, consider running in May, no matter what happens tonight, because all four of you are incredibly talented, and this is a hard decision, this is a really hard decision. I would typically say I defer to my, to my school committee colleagues, because, you know, they know what's kind of best.
But we don't tonight.
And I just want to add, there might be other boards with seats open in May.
Well, so, but, but, but in all seriousness, you know some of us personally, you know us as a group, so you've heard them speak, so I do want, I don't want the Select Board members just to follow our lead, but maybe you don't, can't speak as much to the different issues or with specificity on that, but you know the group, and you've listened to them, and so I think we would all value your thought on a fit, right? Because that's what you kind of alluded to, as a group, you know, is the fit's probably going to be very important.
So I would say, you know, it was interesting, the idea that having somebody that has kids in the younger schools might be a good complement to the current group. I am the only one on the Select Board that has a kid in the school system, so I get it, I feel like.
I have a lot of kids in the school system.
You do.
And I'm the only one on this board that doesn't have any more kids in the school system.
But I did. But it does have like a, you come with a different perspective, you just do. And so, you know, that, to me, is an interesting, that does, I mean, I kind of, I agree with Paul, like I think, I think Marcy's perspective, especially when it comes to the finance, would be really good as far as like trying to help us develop the budget. I know Jen, like, I think, I think that the policy fit would be really great, too. So, and then Katie, as an educator, I think also brings a very different perspective, because, again, the school committee has three lawyers and an engineer.
Don't say that like it's a bad thing.
No, 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 but they all are very different.
Somehow the engineer part was a bad thing, but.
But I think the dynamic, you know, like, I, I would, I would probably, oh, God. I mean, if, if I had to choose, you know, like, if I had to choose, I would, I would, my, it's really difficult, but my vote would probably be for Marcy. That would be mine, but that's mine, so I'm not.
You have a vote at this table.
It doesn't, but it literally, please, it does not take away from, from, from the four, the other three.
No, I think we're all feeling that way tonight. I mean, as far as like people that check the box, you're all leaders, you've all proven yourself in leadership ways, you're running all kinds of wonderful things in the community, you've been successful at your jobs, you're obviously bright and engaged with your kids, which is the most important thing, and care about other people's kids, which is why we're all here, right? At the end of the day, we're not doing this for our kids, we're doing this for our community, and you all are here clearly for those reasons, and those reasons primarily, at least that's what I heard. And for that reason, and I can make an argument for everybody, Katie definitely with the educator, that's such an important perspective. I feel Jonathan with, you know, new dad, with kids just coming up, we are missing that sort of young, and your perspective in business world would be really helpful. Same Jen, like, all the things that you've accomplished, and I've been to that wonderful temple, and clearly you're a great leader and you've done great things in the community. I don't, I don't know any of you personally, so I'm just saying what I'm learning about you, so it's, whatever I can say that I've learned in a couple hours or whatever, minor conversations or emails we've had, listening to the conversations, I'm just thinking about the timing and what you said about budget, and I think probably of the four, and this is just a timing thing, because there are five probably meetings left between now and the election. There's probably only two or three before you have to pull your papers and make a decision. So nobody is learning the job or figuring things out before you're finding yourself deep in an election. So if you're thinking that there's really time for that, there really isn't, even as far as like getting to know us or getting to know the dynamics, we can all agree that there's a pretty good learning curve. Claudia, you're, Claudia has been like the queen of this town, you know, seriously, she's, you know, been a tremendous principal administrator, school committee member, citizen of this town, speaks at every town meeting, but I, you would probably agree that there's a learning curve on Select Board.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Tina's the most recent member, and we've all, we've all had it, and there's just not a lot of time. So it seems to me, based on the fact that we're entering challenging budget season and we're about to really focus on that, that Marcy's probably the most prepared to step in the position right away, based on the job that she already has, which includes all the things that we do, policy. To me, it is a real plus about the budget thing, I think we have a lot of other skills on this committee, but I am certainly not a numbers person, I won't speak for the other lawyers on the board, but some people went to law school because they couldn't do math.
We don't do numbers, yeah.
But that's another story. And so, you know, I could be wrong about, but that's kind of what rises to the top as far as like stepping right in, understanding, managing, all the things we do, managing people, zeroing in on the budget, connection to the community with seniors and the things that I've heard, so that's the only way that I can think to differentiate based on.
Yeah, but I guess from my perspective, because of what you said, even if you have that skill, you're not stepping in, and there's a learning curve for that. And I think we, if this was a different district, right? So just so you know, this doesn't happen in a very district the same way as it does here. We have a superintendent who is also a finance guy, and we have the Director of Finance, and they do a fantastic job before they even present something to us, and so we're not digging in as deep as those things. And so, and I get that we should look at it as in not, we have Person A, but we have Role A, but we do have these people in these positions right now, and so, and again, this is, so, because this is going to sound like I'm, you know, valuing someone over and not. I'm looking at it just from the lens we are lacking at the table as a whole, not just the voting members, but the table as a whole. You know, if I were to prioritize all the different skills, educator lens, that classroom living it educator, particularly we've talked about, you know, third grade reading, and so I believe Katie's a fourth grade elementary school teacher, right? So if, and that's, that's the only reason in my, like I said, it's One A and One B for me, and then it's One C, it's so hard for this, but I think both would be, so please don't take that, I'd be disappointed in either vote.
Whoever we pick, we're losing the benefit.
If I'm trying to be analytical and try to, because that's, I am an engineer and that helps to make decisions, is like, okay, what if I just be objective and step back? What does that do? That's something we don't have. I mean, I'm a numbers guy, and, you know, I know now more about municipal finance and MSBA financing and everything else than I ever wanted to. So I'm not, and that does not mean that that would replace the skill set. I'm not comparing that in any way, shape, or form, but if I try to put some rubric around it, and I would probably be One A, One B on that skill set and that lens, because it's a gap we have, and it's a gap we will have until we get someone who lives it, right?
Well, by your same reasoning, Jim's been a teacher, Mike's been a teacher, you know, we do have a lot of input, educator input. So it's the same reasoning where you're saying they do budget, we don't have an actual member, like you say, we don't dig that deep, but maybe if we had somebody on the committee that that was their expertise, we would be digging a little deeper.
Yeah, I mean, but, no offense, Jim and Mike, you haven't, you haven't been a classroom teacher in quite some time, right? So I, while I value, and I think that that forms their current lens, I, I wouldn't compare, I wouldn't say that's a replacement to someone who's, you know, done it for as long as Katie has and is currently doing it, in a post-COVID world and through COVID and all those things. And I don't want to belabor that point, but just.
Absolutely. Well, to, you know, to, to kind of piggyback on the uniqueness of our district and the things that our administrators do that may not happen in other places, Jim and Mike are in our classrooms every day. They, they're not teaching, but they are in, they're in all of our buildings every day, and so I do feel like they're very much in touch with what's happening through all the grade levels with all of our kids. They're not the ones in the classroom, I absolutely hear your point, but I do feel like they're very connected to what's happening in the classroom. I've never felt that they were disconnected, I've never felt that there was any feedback otherwise, that their perspectives weren't accurate in terms of what was happening in the buildings. But that's not to belittle, if that's the right word, you know, the experience of somebody like Katie.
You're not minimizing.
And minimize, thank you, not to minimize. It's, you know, I think this, we could go on for hours and go talk about how awesome all of you are, and all of the reasons we want each and every one of you here, and I think we're all getting caught up in the difficulty of this. Would it be helpful for me to make a motion? I don't know, what do you want to have, what's the best way to move forward here?
Only if you're ready to do that, and if people have felt what they want, have said what they want to say, Joe.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, in listening to all the applicants, I have to tell you, there was some verbiage that brought to my attention big time, because it's very important to me, and when I sit on the board, and I've been the longest tenured selectman for over 15 years, so sitting on boards and listening to what has to be said, one of the applicants used the phrase compromise, and that is, that's, to me, that's key on a lot of things. You can agree to disagree, but you need to work on finding a solution, and the word compromise, that struck a chord with me with respect to that. The other, and this is One and One A, I would say Marcy would be One, in my, in my vote, Jen Gordon would be One B, she was the one that used the word compromise several times, and I have to tell you, the burnout on students and teachers struck a chord with me as well. We have to be, you know, very aware of that, and the fact, experience in policymaking, because you folks are policymakers, and looking at Marcy's, you know, resume and everything else, and she even spoke to it when she was up at the podium, that she has very great experience in creating policies. So in my mind, that would be a great fit, they all would be great fits, but I was looking at key words in what they were, in surmising what, you know, what I thought would be a good fit for you folks on the board. Far be it for me to say that I know what the hell I'm talking about, okay? Because I don't.
Yes, we respect your opinion, and that's why you're here.
You know, but that's, I mean, and looking at it as an outsider, because I consider myself an outsider with respect to the school board, though I have subbed many a times, though I did do programs in the school when I was a police officer, thankfully, and I enjoyed it. So, yeah, I mean, I've had, I've seen the gambit of all different things, and to do what we were doing years ago wouldn't happen today because of all the different policy changes and cultural changes that have happened. So needless to say, I mean, those would be my choices, if you're asking for that, I mean, that.
You're voting, so.
No, I know, but I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, your opinion matters, is what I'm saying.
Those were key words in my, in listening to what they all had to say, and those struck chords with respect to that, so I hope it did for all of you as well.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, that's helpful.
Yeah, there were several things that people said that I'm like, wow, they're really great. And I think Claudia, you were the, you're the only one that hasn't had that second bite at the apple, you just kind of said the.
Yeah, I said some nice things.
Said how tough it was, I don't know if you, I'm putting you on the spot, but did you want to, you know.
Yeah, you know, a couple of things, and I have experience as a school committee member, right? And I lived through days when the Select Board and the town, or the general government side of the town, and the school committee did a lot of knocking heads, and it was very unpleasant. And, you know, to Brandy's point about some of the times ahead, I have some concerns about that, and I think it's going to be critical for everyone to be able to work together. I can also tell you that when I was on the school committee, for a long period of time, we had three or four members who had a child in the same grade, and there were times when I thought, gee, you know, we don't have our fingers in enough places, and we don't, you know, it's just easier sometimes when you have children or somehow spread out, yeah, so I think that's important. You know, I do think that there are, any one of you would do well, and that I feel as though it is to some degree, although I talked to Lori about this a little bit, that, you know, I would support a decision that the school committee makes, you know, unless there was something I thought was outrageously, then I would not be fearful about speaking up. But, you know, the good news is, and the bad news is, that we're not in that position. We're in a position where you have to make a tough decision, so, you know, that being said, I think that probably Marcy and Katie are the ones that bring a little different perspective to the table, as I think, you know, a couple of people have talked about, so I could certainly support either of them and hope that any one of them might consider other positions in the community.
Well, I mean, let's say if somebody else has more to say, I guess, reading the, reading the room, I would, you know, make a motion to appoint Marcy Culverwell to the school committee. That seems to be the consensus.
Does anybody want to second that? Second that?
Do we want to have more discussion about that?
More discussion? I mean, I think we said.
I think we've said everything that needed to be said, yeah.
Are you two ready to make the vote? Are you good to go?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, from the school committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
From the Select Board, we have to do a voice roll call vote.
Bennett, yes.
Kinsman, yes.
Miniani, yes.
Do we also just to make the record clean, just in case?
Sure.
Fatanides, yes.
Kendall, yes.
Tosti, yes.
There you go.
So, again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, Katie, you're online, so look up at you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
We appreciate you all, you're all awesome. Please look for open seats, they're constantly popping up.
Stay involved.
And Jonathan, just like that opening presentation, she was, she's on the Site Council, if you don't know what Site Council is.
I text my wife after, if I got picked out of the space of words, I have no problem.
That's awesome.
When the kid go in the system having good-
No, stay, stay engaged.
Yeah, you're just beginning that journey. Don't stop.
Love, love the energy and the enthusiasm.
And the truth is, and there is a real need for like, I have no connections to anybody like with kids who are as young as yours. Like, there's a real need for us to hear from you and see you and get to know you. Seriously. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you very much.
All of your time. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, Jen.
It's, it's ridiculous.
I was like, should I bring my wallet in case we do the-
It was awful. I'm still not gonna sleep well tonight.
Yes.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
We still have some business for the school committee, so you guys can adjourn.
We need to adjourn our meeting.
Like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor at, that's not the correct time.
Eight thirty-one.
Yeah. And I just want to thank the select board again. Yeah, you can, you can just agree to adjourn, but then let me thank you.
Agree to adjourn, thank you. We adjourned at eight thirty-one. Thank you.
But honestly, your input was so helpful. And it, I know it's hard for you as it is for us. And I really appreciate just in general, your collaboration. We've come a long way. Joe?
A long way since the betting I've had many, 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 many years ago when I first got on the board.
Right.
I think cooler heads have prevailed. And we have people that are in certain positions that are gonna make this a lot, this, even though it's gonna be a difficult budget, it's, it'll work.
Yeah.
It'll work.
No, we'll make it work. Thank you, thank you for your partnership tonight and-
Thank you all.
And everything.
Yeah. And that was helpful, Brandy, raising about the budget. I mean, it's, it's gonna be tricky.
I was gonna ask too, just while we're here, I know we're having our department head meeting this Friday.
Friday, budget wise.
For a budget. And, and if the school committee, I mean, I would, I know I would love to come to your budget workshop whenever you guys do have that. And I know it gets posted and things like that. But I just, I would love to be a part of that because it is like, it is a whole community discussion.
Just to sit and listen.
End of February, early March.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of negotiations with five units, so.
Oh, man.
Okay, good luck.
Let's see how that goes.
I'm glad you shaved your head.
Yeah.
So it doesn't fall out?
It doesn't fall out.
I know, we have to connect one of these days.
Thank you.
Marcy, congratulations.
One thing she needs to do?
Yeah, get sworn in.
Go down to the clerk's office and get sworn in.
Yes.
Yes, if possible.
Connected.
Yes, yeah.
Or like sometime before-
If we were really quick, she could have done it tonight.
I don't think it really needs to happen before the first meeting. Yep?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can start chatting with her?
Well, I just think it's important that-
Well, I mean, you, you can have conversation. She, she can't participate until, until you're sworn in.
Okay. We're available for questions and, and we can support your onboarding.
If you just have a call, you don't have the entire board there. Can you vote? It has to be.
It's the first time we've only had a meeting.
I was there last night. I had, I was part of that program. We all had a vote.
Yeah.
We still have an open part of our meeting.
Yeah, we're still, we gotta keep going. We are still on.
All right. Warren approvals. Paul?
All right, give me a second.
Oh, sorry, Jim, I've taken over.
No, you took, you took my stuff.
Sorry.
All right. Between January eleventh, twenty twenty-four and January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of four hundred thirty-eight thousand five, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. This includes general fund expenses of three hundred thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents, revolving expenses of a hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and eleven cents, and grant expenses of one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes?
Yeah, we're in there.
Yeah.
I, I, I actually didn't get a chance to look at them.
Do we, we want to punt it then?
Yeah, can we? Because there's only three of us and I can't.
Yeah, so we're punting the minutes to January tenth, to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have gifts and donations?
We do. We have one, Ashland PTO of one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, donation to the grade six equatorium visit.
Thank you.
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye, just in case. Does anybody have any updates they want to share real quick before we move to go into executive session?
So the last Ash Pack meeting was canceled because it was on, it was snowing. So that didn't happen last week. But a couple of weekends ago was the, the Central Mass District Band and Orchestra and Chorus Festival. And I forget the full name of the festival, but it was phenomenal. Ashland had ten students who participated this year, and they all did great. It was incredible. They did a performance at Mechanics Hall. And they worked really hard because they had marathon rehearsals a few days the week before and then the, the performance on the Saturday. And the kids put in, the students put in a ton of time and work, and it was really impressive. We also had a number of students, I think there were six students who were recommended for an all-state audition for the Allstate Music Educators Festival, I believe is what it's called. And one of our students, Sarah Mixis, was selected to be a part of the Allstate Band, which is a huge honor. So yay for Sarah.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
That's great.
And yay for Ashley, because we had six students who got the nod. It's not easy to get a recommendation to even audition for Allstates. And we had six students.
That's huge.
Yeah.
I got nothing. I probably should say something, but I got nothing. I'm, I'm-
That, that took a lot out of me.
Yeah, I'm wiped. It's so stressful.
Okay. Well, then I will move to go into executive session under twenty-one A three to conduct with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, not to return to open session regarding Ashland Educators Association teachers, education support personnel, nurses, administrative assistants, and custodian and maintenance, not to return to open session. So I have to take a roll call vote. Tina Fatanides?
Yes.
Paul Kendall?
Yes.
And yes for me. So, good night, everybody. We will not be returning. We will be entering executive session in a few minutes.